Ladies and gentlemen, we're having a little trouble with the live stream, so I'm sorry. Thank you for your patience, but we're going to be just a few minutes longer. Okay, we're working on the live stream, but it is not up and running, so we'll just start the meeting without it, and they'll keep working on it. So, welcome, and I would now like to call the May 28, 2024 regular session of council to order. You can usually, when we get the live stream up, view this on the city's YouTube channel or on longmontpublicmedia.org/watch. May we have the roll call, please, Crystal?
Mayor Peck.
Present.
Councilmember Crist.
Present.
Mayor Hidalgo Ferring.
Here.
Councilmember Martin. Councilmember McCoy. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors McCoy and Martin are both absent tonight. They will not be at the meeting. Let's stand for the pledge.
Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder for the public, in accordance with the city council's rules of procedure, the rules for providing public comment are as follows. Only Longmont residents and employees of the city of Longmont may speak during the first call public invited to be heard. You must provide your address on the sign-up sheet before the meeting, or I will not call on your name. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and anyone may speak on second reading or public hearing items, and you're asked to add your name to the speaker list for that specific item that you are here to speak on. And anyone can speak at the final call public invited to be heard. May I have approval of the May 14 minutes? I need a second.
Did she move it?
No.
Shakita did.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right. So, approval of the May 14 minutes was moved by Counselor Yarborough, seconded by Counselor Hidalgo Ferring. Is there any discussion? Counselor Crist.
Thank you. It's item 10A. Let me bring this down so I can take a look at it here.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. Oh, I'm sorry. Take a couple of days off. I need to recharge. So, in item 10A, I think... That doesn't look like it either. Oh, let's see, I think we're looking at...I'm looking at nine. Hold on. There's a long consent agenda there. Okay. In regards to the ordinance 20-08, just on page 12, I just wanted to add that the remark there was that 200,000 was originally assigned to small business, and then we were not able to allocate it to the benefit of small business. And then Ms. O'Donnell explained pretty succinctly why we weren't. So if you could just change...I'm asking if it's written, "Ask if funding could be allocated," but actually, I remarked that funding was originally allocated to benefit small business who were struggling from COVID impacts. This might...small change, so a motion to change it to the "was originally allocated" for small business.
So do you want to make a motion to add that to this...to these meeting minutes?
Yes, I would like to amend the meeting minutes to say that funding was originally allocated to benefit small business, rather than "could be, but was originally allocated."
Pardon me? I think it was. So I'll second that.
It was on the package, yeah.
I'll second that. So, for the people in the chamber, what it says in the minutes is that a bill for an ordinance condition...no, where is that?
Yeah, where is it?
You lost it.
It's at the top here. There we go.
Okay. During the Longmont Housing Authority meeting, it was brought up that some ARPA funds were being allocated to low-income housing, to LHA. And Counselor Crist asked if...at that time, it was Commissioner Crist. She asked if part of that funding could go to small businesses. And her remark was that it had been allocated in the past. So she would like the statement that she said it had been allocated in the past, mainly to give reference to her statement at the meeting. So do we have any...do we have any comment from counselors? Counselor Hidalgo Ferring.
Okay, and I'm looking at...so this is for the city council regular session on May 14th. So I heard you say that at the Housing Authority...
Right, that's what I was...
Meeting, but this is for the record, and this is from May 14th, and I can't...I mean, we'd have to go back and look at audio to look...to see if the language was exactly what you said.
I just think it further explains Ms. O'Donnell's response, and said that why the paperwork was so complex for businesses, and that the applications dried up. So it was originally allocated to them.
So Counselor Crist, the reason I said the LHA meeting is because that's where I remember that you said it, not at this council meeting.
She made comments in both meetings.
I did, yeah.
That's all I can tell you.
So, let's vote, I don't see any other discussion.
Not coming up for me. Let's see, let me...there we go.
She should have either accepted the amendment or not.
Did you accept the amendment?
Well, she seconded...she seconded...oh, did you?
You don't have to second that.
Okay. You accepted the amendment. Okay. I would like it if you would turn on your microphone, because we can't hear you. Thank you. No, when you discuss it...when you speak next time. Okay, so it has been amended and seconded?
The amendment has been accepted.
Accepted, yeah.
You're right, the amendment has been accepted. All right, we don't have to vote.
But we vote to accept the minutes as amended.
As amended.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended? See how confusing this is? Don't ever do that again, Counselor Crist. Okay, let's vote. That passes unanimously, thank you. So, do we have any agenda revisions, Crystal?
Yes, Mayor, staff is requesting that item 9B regarding the youth advisory board appointments be removed from the agenda this evening.
9H?
9H, yes.
9H?
9H.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any motions for council for future agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to the city manager's report.
No report, Mayor, council.
Now we're on to the special reports and presentations. We have Longmont Museum presenting Build, Design, and Create with LEGO. And they have done a very good job of creating Legos in all of council's likeness. I'm the only one that put mine up there. Oh, there's Shakitas and... Oh, and I see our city attorney has his up and city manager. So, thank you for these.
Well, certainly. Mayor Peck, members of council, my name's Eric Mason, I'm the director of the Longmont Museum. And as you mentioned, the museum is opening a new exhibit, Build, Design, and Create with LEGO, on Saturday, June 1st. This hands-on, interactive exhibit appeals to anyone who would like to express their creativity and solve challenges through LEGO. And in celebration, we have created custom LEGO mini-figures representing all of city council and city leadership. Since it was introduced in 1978, the LEGO mini-figure, or mini-fig as it's called, is now almost as iconic as the LEGO brick. There are thousands of different combinations possible, and our marketing coordinator, Joan Harold, spent a lot of time matching things exactly so that each person's mini-fig is unique to them. We hope that you enjoy these fun icons of the museum's exhibit and to spray them proudly during council meetings during the month of June, and we look forward to seeing the community at the Longmont Museum for this fun-filled LEGO exhibit. Thank you.
Thank you, cannot wait. It will be fun. Sure.
My computer froze. I'm gonna reset it, restart it. Ask the mini-fig to fix it. Yes. Get at it. Maybe so. I'm just gonna unplug it and start again.
For those who haven't seen this, Joan, she is the one who put these together for everybody.
Grab my little person. Thank you. Thank you for the motion. Push it a little bit, yeah. Sorry, I got motioned. Okay, so let's see those mini figurines.
And I'm gonna go in real quick. Yes, exactly. That's right, everyone. That's right.
Harold and Eugene as well. You wanna send them right back before you have them at the end of the night, I'll collect them through the month of June. Oh, Riven, you have it. I'm like, what are you doing? Yeah, so I'll care for your mini-figs during June. Thank you all. Thanks for being such good sports about it. Go LEGO! Go LEGO!
We're now at first call public invited to be heard. We remember that we need your name and address, and the first person on our list is Gary Hodges.
Good evening, Mayor Peck, council. It's a pleasure to be here again. It's been a little...few weeks since I had the honor standing before you. I made a last-minute decision on what I wanted to talk about, so this might be a little disjointed, but I just wanted to mention, well, you know, but let's tell everyone else, I mean, the packet this week was 754 pages, so I think you guys should really be commended for some of the things you have to wade through. There's a lot there, and I did look through it, and something caught my eye, which caused me to wanna change what I was gonna talk about, and that was the 2024 water study that's going to commence. So in it, this is largely driven by the water treatment plant as the primary driver of funding shortfall, so this goes back to a bond vote in 2020 where we issued bonds and also rates were raised, and the combination of the rate revenue and the bond revenue, I guess, is not enough to complete that water treatment plant. So I mean, that's a little interesting. I mean, it's three full years since that vote, more than three full years, and now we're gonna have to go back and do something about it, and it's a little unfortunate. So, water most certainly falls under a city's core function. I mean, without question, you know, roads, safety, water, I mean, any one of those maybe could be counted as number one. Strong argument could be made for water. Longmont has great water, and I'll say we all are thankful for it. I certainly am, and I think everybody is, whether they really understand it or not. I'm hopeful we can find a way to resolve this without a rate increase. I mean, rates have a real permanence, they don't go away. And, you know, I mean, raising rates is just gonna, in effect, pull from the general fund, as any good economist would say, there's no such thing as a free lunch. And so if people are paying more for their water bill, they're gonna be spending less money at Home Depot or whatever. And I did wanna just tie this back into the electric rates that we're raising. Again, you guys heard me, and you understand, I had a guest opinion piece in Longmont Times' Call, and maybe you saw that, about our electricity rates that are going up for no reason, and so we have water rates that are going to go up for a tangible reason, potentially, if we can't find another way, and our electricity rates are going up. This all comes into the total cost of living, you know, with rent, utilities, insurance, property taxes, and everything. And, well, I was gonna talk about this a little bit, but I'm quickly running out of time, but this is a study, University of Michigan, and it's a copper can't be mined fast enough, there's just not enough copper being mined, so we can't achieve what's being attempted to be achieved by the Longmont 2030 carbon-free electricity. So I just, again, would encourage you to stop that and maybe deal with the water. Thank you, have a good evening, it's good to be back.
Thank you, Gary. The next person is Strider.
Thank you. Strider Benson, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I, as often the case, I wanna talk about democracy. And last week on TCM, they showed a movie I'd never heard of or seen before, I think it was in 1994. It's called Separate But Equal. Burt Lancaster produced it, and he played a southern senator, and Sidney Poitier played Thurgood Marshall, and it's called Separate But Equal, and it's about the bringing the Brown case into the Supreme Court, which Clarence Thomas and others are trying to eliminate now. And that's part of what the game is going on. John Roberts, who was legally seated, has spent his whole career in trying to destroy the Voting Rights Act, which I've put my whole life into creating and upholding. I believe in democracy. It is difficult, as Churchill said, but it's the only chance we have to create a viable society without mass killings and stuff. And the...and I haven't been really had a chance to speak anywhere except here for two or three minutes, you know, once every month or so, for the last several years, but it has to do with the fact I have a master's in humanities and philosophy and history and degree in political science, and I ran for school board and got a lot of votes, but not enough to win. And the current Supreme Court is pushing and accepting any form of voter suppression, gerrymandering, denying minority people the right to vote. You can only have one place to vote, in a black precinct, but in a white precinct, you can have many, getting rid of the drop boxes, and anything possible to exterminate or limit or cripple the right to vote. And that's the only chance we have to survive as a society. And a former president put out a thing just a few days ago that, you know, the unified right, Reich, you know, Adolf Hitler's Third Reich, we'll do it over again. Wake up and participate.
Thank you, Strider.
Oh, let me pass this around to council. It's the case in the Supreme Court that...
Okay, all right. Give it to Crystal, and she'll pass it around.
There were two of 300 that they listened to. The John Chiefs...
Okay, thanks. Lawrence Becher?
Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. Lawrence Becher? Oh, I guess he isn't here. He might show up a bit later. Seeing no one else on the list, I'm gonna close first call public invited to be heard. We are now at the consent agenda, and Crystal, would you please read the consent agenda into the record?
Yes, Mayor. The second reading of public hearing call, all ordinances introduced on this agenda will be held on June 11, 2024. Item 9A is ordinance 2024-40, a bill for an ordinance establishing a charge of $1.25 per month for emergency telephone services, 911 for wired, wireless, and VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol, subscribers in Longmont for the calendar year 2025. Item 9B is ordinance 2024-21, a bill for an ordinance amending section 14.04.330 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding temporary water permits for construction water. Item 9C is resolution 2024-30, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the city and the Longmont Climbing Collective. Item 9D is resolution 2024-31. Item 9D is Resolution 2024-31, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing loans from fund balance in the city's fleet fund to the DDA Construction Fund and the DDA Arts and Entertainment Fund, providing for repayment of the loans from the DDA Tax Increment Income Fund. Item 9E is Resolution 2024-32, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing agreements between the city of Longmont and 26 South Sunset Street LLC for the Resilient St. Brain Project. Item 9F is Resolution 2024-33, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for a state aviation grant for wildlife fencing construction at the Vance Brand Airport. And item 9G is approved five capital improvement program amendments.
Thank you, Crystal. Does anyone wanna pull any items from the consent agenda? Counselor Christ. Can you turn on your microphone again? I didn't... There you go.
I would like to pull B and C.
Would you make a motion?
I move that we move the consent agenda, accepting items B and C. And H.
H was removed by our staff. So, B, C, and H. Crystal, is H removed for a discussion, or is it just taken off this agenda item tonight?
It's taken off this agenda. They'll bring it back on June 11.
Which is why you didn't read it.
Yes.
Thank you. So Counselor Christ moved the consent agenda minus items B and C, and was that seconded?
Oh, but not G.
I'm... B and C.
Yes, that's just what's coming up is G.
Oh, I'm sorry. So G and H need to be taken off. Okay. And it's been seconded by Counselor Hidalgel Ferring. Are there... Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes unanimously with five of us. Your counselor, McCoy, and Martin are absent. This is a very fast agenda tonight. We're now on items, ordinances on second reading, and public hearings on any matter. The first one is 2024-30, which is a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024. Are there any questions or discussion from counsel on this bill? Seeing none, I would now like to open it for the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this bill? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. May I please have a motion to pass and adopt 2024-30?
I move that we...
I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right.
I move that we adopt 2024-30. Second.
It's been moved, and it's been moved by Counselor Christ to adopt and pass 2024-30, seconded by Counselor Hidalgel Ferring. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously with Counselor McCoy and Martin absent. The next bill is 2024-31, a bill for an ordinance amending Title IV of the Longmont Municipal Code on Revenue and Finance by Creating the First and Main Transit Facilities Fund. Is there any questions from counsel on this bill? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing for 2024-31. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this bill? Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing for 2024-31. And may I have a motion?
I'll move ordinance 2024-31. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Hidalgel Ferring, seconded by Counselor Christ. Let's vote. And that carries unanimously with Counselors McCoy and Martin absent. C is House Pad Invision Longmont Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment, Rezoning and Concept Plan Amendment.
Governor Counsel, we do have a presentation tonight on this one.
Great.
I wanted to say this is a project that we entered into at the Public Private Partnership, and we wanted to use this opportunity for them to present the information and get you up to speed in terms of where we are.
Okay. So for the people here, House Pad also is known as our Mustang development. And so the name of it changed. So if you were used to hearing about Mustang development, they are one and the same.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Peck and council members. I am Kristin Coney, a senior planner in Planning and Development Services. This evening, for your consideration, I will be presenting the Invision Longmont Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Rezoning Request, and Concept Plan Amendment. In consideration for the House Pad Affordable and Attainable Neighborhood Project, I would also like to bring to your attention that at the time of the council communications being due, we didn't have posting or notice information for this public hearing available at that time. You do have it for you here tonight, if you have any questions.
Okay.
The subject property encompasses roughly 16.4 acres, lies to the south of Costco, north of Bountiful Avenue.
Kristin, may I interrupt you for a second?
Certainly.
Our computers are not pulling this up. Do you happen to have any hard copies?
I do not have hard copies of my presentation. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. So the subject property encompasses roughly 16.4 acres, lies south of Costco, north of Bountiful Avenue, and west of Harvest Moon Drive. The property is currently zoned RMF, which is residential multifamily, and became part of the city's jurisdiction in 2017, following the Irwin Thomas First Annexation. As per the Invision Longmont Comprehensive Plan, the property holds a designation of multifamily neighborhood. This slide provides an overview of the proposal for the property. The plan involves the development of an all-electric, for-sale residential neighborhood with a maximum of 185 units. Among these, approximately 55 units will be designated for permanent deed restrictions, while approximately 130 units will be deed-restricted attainable units. The neighborhood design encompasses a blend of attached townhomes and detached single-family houses. This approach is intentionally crafted to align with and support the city's objectives outlined in the Invision Longmont Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, it contributes to the city's goal of expanding housing and employment options by fostering a diverse mix of housing that caters to residents of all ages, income levels, and abilities. This property presents an overall density of approximately 11.6 units per acre. This slide illustrates the proposed area for the land use amendment. Approval of this amendment will change the Invision Longmont Comprehensive Plan designation of the 16-acre portion of the property from multifamily neighborhood to mixed neighborhood, as shown in the dark outlined area. The image on the left shows the current multifamily neighborhood designation, while the image on the right demonstrates the proposed mixed neighborhood designation and its relation to the surrounding area. Next, I will discuss the rezoning request. The land is currently zoned as RMF, residential multifamily, and the proposal is to change it to PUD, which is Planned Unit Development, with an RMN, which is residential mixed neighborhood use allowance. This zoning alteration is in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and allows for the desired mix of units as part of the project. This slide provides an overview of the proposed amendment to the amended concept plan, which was adopted in 2021. The proposed amendment entails altering the land use designation of lots 5 and 6 of Irwin Thomas First filing from multifamily neighborhood to mixed neighborhood. This modification is crucial to facilitate the development of the neighborhood, encompassing a blend of single-family detached homes, attached homes, and townhomes. The remainder of the property will remain unaffected by these amendments. Based on the record and the preceding information, staff recommends approval of the House Pad Invision Longmont Comprehensive Plan Use, Land Use Plan Amendment, Rezoning, and Concept Plan Amendment. That concludes my presentation. City staff is available to answer any questions you may have or provide any clarifications. The applicant also has a presentation for you this evening. Thank you.
Sorry, operator error. Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Peck and counsel. I'm Barb Brunk, Resource Conservation Partners, PO Box 1522, Longmont, Colorado. We are very excited to be here this evening to take this step forward, to develop the House Pad Affordable and Attainable Neighborhood Project. Also here with me this evening are Walker Thrash, the managing partner of Vertical LLC, and Brian Williamson, landscape architect with TST Consulting Engineers. As Kristin said, we are here to ask for your review and approval of an Invision Longmont Land Use Map Amendment, Irwin Thomas Number One Annexation, Concept Plan Amendment, and a request to rezon the property. All of these applications are necessary in order to move forward to develop the property in the envisioned density and configuration. Where we are in the world, Kristin showed this... I just wanted to show you that the Irwin Thomas Annexation Number One is a larger parcel. All of the changes are relative to the House Pad piece, which is lots 5 and 6 of Irwin Thomas First filing, but the Concept Plan Amendment includes all of the property, even though we're only changing one thing on it.
Okay.
Here it goes, okay. This project is, as you know, a cooperative effort between the city of Longmont, Vertical LLC, and the original landowner to establish a beautiful, walkable neighborhood of approximately 185 affordable and attainable for-sale homes. The Public Private Partnership was established through agreements approved by the city council at the beginning of this year. The vision is for a beautiful, walkable community of affordable and attainable homes with an integrated open space and pedestrian networks. What is important to know about the way this has been designed is that there's a combination of attached and detached units. They're distributed throughout the neighborhood, and most of them are alley-loaded. And the goal there was to make it so that the neighborhood was blind to which were the affordable, affordable houses and which were the attainable, attainable houses. So as you drive down the street, it's a neighborhood that you wanna live in, and all of the houses have a beautiful place to be. This is a land use amendment. Again, the big picture here is we're lowering the density. So we're going from multifamily neighborhood to mixed neighborhood. And that takes the density from 18 to 35 units per acre to 6 to 18 units per acre. Density here will be 11.6, but we have to change the designation in order to use that lower density on the property. This shows the concept plan before and after. So along the top slide is the existing concept plan as approved. Along the bottom slide is the difference where we are changing the multifamily neighborhood to mixed neighborhood. That's the only thing about the concept plan that's changing. The land use table in the concept plan changes a little bit to make up for the reduction in density, but the only change to the concept plan as approved is to change that land use designation. And again, this is required so that we can develop the property with the type of units and at the density that's anticipated. Rezoning, so the existing zoning is residential multifamily, which is 18 to 35 units per acre, up to three stories, with additional height for affordable housing, which is up to 560 units on 16 acres. The planned unit development zoning will be consistent with the underlying land use, which is 6 to 18 units per acre. The plan as presented makes 185 units, which is 11.6 units per acre, one and two stories with a maximum building height of 30 feet. So it's kind of feathering out from the existing single-family residential neighborhood to the west into this neighborhood where the higher density will be. These applications are an opportunity, the first one we've had, to establish a neighborhood of for-sale, deed-restricted, affordable, and attainable homes. Such a great cooperative effort. We believe the applications as presented meet the purpose and intent of the city's stated goals for providing more housing opportunities in Longmont and the specific review criteria as set forth in the Longmont Municipal Code, including, and I have to put these in the record, Section 1502055, Section 1502060, Section 1502060B3, and Section 1502060F5. The specific details of how the applications meet the criteria are included in the council packet this evening. So all of that detail is there. We wish to thank you, Mayor Peck and counsel, for your time and attention, and to really stress that this opportunity would not be possible without the city of Longmont. City staff helped us all along the way. They were solution-oriented. They helped us solve problems. They helped us make sure that we met the letter and intent of the municipal code in order to bring you this project as it's presented this evening. That's our story. We respectfully request that you approve the Invision Longmont Land Use Map Amendment, Rezoning, and Concept Plan, and our design team is here to answer questions. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So the bill is 2024-32. It's a bill for an ordinance approving the House Pad Invision Longmont Comprehensive Land Use Plan Amendment. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Rodriguez?
Hi there. This is kind of a procedural question in the sense that this was brought to us conditioned by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is it within our purview to remove conditions?
Which condition are you referring to?
Specifically, the removal of parking spaces. This project is already not overparked by any concept. And so the very few extra parking spaces that were removed as a condition by the Planning and Zoning Commission, I would just want to revisit that.
So city attorney can jump in. I think that's associated with the PUD, which the PUD, actually, the Planning and Zoning Commission is the decision-maker on this. So I'm not... Based on what I understood earlier, the council can't remove that restriction. But to that point, and to your question, when we were going through the process with the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was some discussion about heat islands and sustainability issues. And so I think what they did in that decision, and it was a bit of negotiating on the fly, is remove 16 parking spaces related to the development. Since I've been informed of that, I've had conversations with staff on this issue. And as you know, the city of Longmont is the owner of the property. We also are a significant investor in the property in terms of utilizing federal funds that we received, state grants that we received for this project, fee waivers that are going into this project, and then also funds from our affordable and attainable housing project. Based on that, I think when you look at what we're trying to achieve in this neighborhood for sale housing in the attainable and the affordable realm, I'm concerned that losing those parking spaces could be a detriment in terms of how the homes sell, not only in the first round, but the second round, when people try to resell their homes. So based on what I learned from the city attorney today, this is what I was gonna talk to you about after the approval. I'm going to work with the team and, as a representative of the owner of the property, going to go back to the planning commission and ask for that restriction to be removed. If that restriction's not removed, then I would appeal that actually back to this body.
Okay. Well, then, clarifies that question. Thank you.
Good point. I just wanna say that this is an amazing project, and one of the reasons that I truly, truly love it is that it really is an inclusionary project. We have all income levels of people living in this project, but the housing does not display. It is not the lower income living on one part of it. It's all inclusionary, truly. So plus, it is affordable as far as being deed-restricted. So, plus, it is affordable as far as being deed-restricted and for sale. It is allowing people to generate wealth generationally so that, and I have to say that other cities have asked, "How are you doing this?" because they can't figure it out. So, kudos to staff. It's been a lot of work. It still is, as you've heard from Harold. So, it's great. Seeing no other comments, I would like to open it up to, pardon me? Okay. I would like to open this up to a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this bill? Come on down.
Shaquille Delal, 219 Francis Street. As you know, I am always in favor of affordable and attainable homes being built in the city, and in that respect, I'm very excited about this project. The one comment that I would make is that we are attempting to build a city that is less reliant on single occupancy vehicles. We're attempting to build a city that uses mass transit and walking and biking in order to move people. A parking space takes up about 300 square feet. 16 parking spaces takes up a lot of land, and so I would be curious to know how many units would have to be sacrificed in order to create those parking spaces. The other question that I have is about whether or not that requirement for parking spaces is really future-looking, or if the development as proposed is more future-looking the way it is and more in line with the city's overall goals of environmental stewardship and also the Vision Zero Plan, which seeks to, among other things, discourage the excessive use of single occupancy vehicles for short trips. I'd also frankly like to see some commercial in this development. It's asked to be changed to RMN, which does allow certain commercial uses. I'd like to see those incorporated in this as well, again, to reduce the number of vehicle trips that the residents have to take so that they can buy some groceries within their neighborhood if they need to. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Shaquille. Oh, Gary, I'm sorry, I didn't, thank you.
Thank you, Gary Hodges, 2148 Stewart Street. So I feel just compelled to make some comments. I mean, I agree, it looks nice, but I would like to speak on behalf of the vast, vast majority who enjoy cars to get around. We're a car-centric society. That's just a fundamental truth. We're not getting away from that, so I appreciate Councilman Rodriguez bringing that up about that. But, on the broader point of deed-restricted and to achieve affordable, attainable, it just shifts a burden. It doesn't eliminate a burden. It effectively takes away market rate housing, and if you take away market rate housing, you drive up the cost of the market rate housing. So somebody's going to pay, and it'll be the people that are just outside of those that would qualify for these houses. They're going to bear the burden of the increase in the market rate housing. So, saw a survey the other day. It's like 83% of people seeking housing in the United States want single-family homes. Those that have been pushing for high density and such, I mean, it's been a vocal minority, and they've been very successful, and I have to acknowledge and commend them for their success in getting a lot of this through, but it is not what the majority wants. The majority want single-family homes that are affordable, but if we make them affordable, if we just decree they're affordable through deed-restricted and other methods, it doesn't work. It works for some, but not, but it just shifts it to someone else, so thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Seeing no other comments, can I have a motion for 2024-32?
I'll move ordinance 2024-32.
It's been moved by Councilor Hidalgo Ferring, seconded by Councilor Yarborough. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously with Councilor Martin and Councilor McCoy absent. Did I see Lawrence Bisher come into the podium? Okay. I saw a gentleman come in, and I was wondering if that was him. We are now on to...
32.
This one, 32. Okay, we are now at a bill for an ordinance. It's 2024-33, approving the rezoning of lots five and six, Irwin Thomas first filing plat, generally located west of Harvest Moon Drive and north of Bonneville Avenue, changing the zoning from residential multifamily to planned unit development. This was part of the presentation. Is, are there any questions from council? I'll now open it up to the public for the public hearing. Does anyone want to address 2024-32? 33. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move ordinance 2024-33.
Second.
Seconded, Council Rodriguez moved 2024-33, seconded by Councilor Hidalgo Ferring. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously with Councilor McCoy and Councilor Martin absent. We're now at a bill for an ordinance approving the second concept plan amendment to the Irwin Thomas Annexation number one concept plan, generally located north of Bonneville Avenue and west of Harvest Moon Drive. This is bill 2024-34. Are there any questions from council or comments? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing for 2024-34. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this bill? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment and ask for a motion.
I move ordinance 2024-34.
It's been moved by Councilor Rodriguez, seconded by Councilor Yarborough. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously with councilors McCoy and Martin absent. The last one is D, 2024-35. It's a bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 7.04 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding animals. Are there any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing for 2024-35. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this bill? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll move ordinance 2024-35.
The motion was made by Councilor Hidalgo Ferring, seconded by Councilor Yarborough. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously with councilors McCoy and Martin absent. The next bill is E, 2024-36. It's a bill for an ordinance amending Section 14.06.40 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Backflow and Cross Connections Concerning Enforcement and Certifying Charges to the County Treasurer. Are there any comments or discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing on 2024-36. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this bill? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a vote, I mean, sorry, a motion.
I move ordinance 2024-36.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Yarborough, seconded by Councilor Hidalgo Ferring to move 2024-36. And that passes 4 to 1 with Councilor Crist in opposition, and councilors McCoy and Martin absent. The next bill is 2024-37. It's a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H-35 to Paul Dixon, the tenant. Are there any, is there any discussion or comments from council? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing on 2024-37. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment or address this bill? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move acceptance of 2024-37.
Second.
2024-37 was moved by Councilor Chris, seconded by Councilor Rodriguez. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously with Councilor McCoy and Martin absent. The last one is 2024-39. And it's a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 15.05, Section 15.05.080 of the Longmont Municipal Code concerning off-street parking requirements and repealing and reenacting Are there any questions or discussion from councilors on 2024-39? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing on 2024-39. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this bill? Seeing, yes?
Shaquille Delal, 219 Francis Street. Mayor members of council, the cost of housing is a choice. Based on your discussion at the first reading of this item, I'm confident that today we'll be making the choice to lower the cost of housing. Today's a pretty good day. By eliminating residential parking minimums, this item fixes a mistake that exists not just in the Longmont Municipal Code, but in land use codes across the United States. The Parking Reform Network tracks the status of parking ordinances in 2,745 American cities. If this item passes, we will become just the 505th city in the United States who have completely eliminated parking minimums. First credit for this where it is due is to city staff. The changes that you'd be voting on today would not be possible without the consistent dedication of the people who work for this city, but may not themselves be able to afford to live here. This is because why some say, might just say, "It's just parking." The amount of space taken up by a parking spot is huge, as I noted earlier. A typical parking space is about 300 square feet. That makes two parking spaces a studio apartment and four parking spaces a two-bedroom. Parking spots increase the cost of housing, whether that housing is market rate or subsidized through the city's Affordable Housing Fund. The spoke-on Kaufman cost about $30 million to build, using a combination of affordable housing funds, and has about 73 units of housing and 262 parking spaces. If those 262 parking spots were converted to apartments, they could have housed 131 more people. It is enough to make you wonder what the $30 million was really spent on. In fact, the Parking Reform Network estimates that a single parking space adds $200 to $500 per month to the rent or mortgage payment. Those parking spaces don't just increase the cost of housing, they make our city more dangerous for bikers and pedestrians in conflict with the city's stated Vision Zero goals. Making a home in Longmont attainable to the average person is going to take a lot of choices and making many changes to the city, but if we keep at it and we keep making decisions that push us towards a human-scaled city, we will succeed. The cost of housing is a choice. Today, the choice is clear. Please vote in favor of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the pub, whoa, we do have someone else. Come on down.
Morgan Truexler, 521 Terry Street. So I'm here in support of 10G, and I just want to start by thanking the staff for their work on this parking reform. I think that it's going to be a great change to the city, and the main reason I think that is that it's going to support a biodiversity of housing types. Right now, we've got a lot of single-family homes, but I live in an apartment near downtown of Longmont here, and my unit has two bedrooms, but only one parking spot. That is not possible outside of the downtown Longmont area in the city that I'm aware of. And so, it creates more opportunities for people to live in units like mine, right? And I really like where I live. It's also incredibly affordable, to Shaquille's point, where I pay $1,650 for two bedrooms, but more modern developments that have more parking pay tremendously more, like $500 more for their unit. And so, that biodiversity of housing is really important to me. It enables ADUs as well, all these, the biodiversity of housing. The next thing is that it's going to be required for compliance with state laws that are coming into effect in a year or two. And then, the last point is, we talk a lot about the CO2 that's created by traveling via cars, and that's absolutely important and a major source of emissions. But, a secondary one that we don't really talk about much is that concrete also produces just a ton of emissions. Every parking pad that we pour is moving us away from our goals of a better climate future. So, transportation accounts for 30% of our, like, driving vehicles, accounts for 30% of our emissions, but the concrete pouring part of that is another, like, 10%. And so, the, these parking pads or the asphalt concrete that is connecting all of them together are a significant portion of that as well. And that's everything I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you. One more. Gary.
Thanks, Gary Hodges, 2148 Stewart Street. To say housing price is a choice is just a specious comment. If it were real, let's just declare all our housing costs a buck or 10 bucks or something like that, and we'll just choose to all pay that. So, that's not how it works. It's a market-driven pricing. You take away market rate housing, it's going to drive up the housing costs. Of course, parking, available parking increases the housing cost because it makes your house more usable. You can actually have friends come over and visit. You can park and get your groceries out and walk into your house. It makes your house more valuable. So, to just say that, "Let's get rid of parking and make housing cheaper," well, I mean, that will work because most people won't want that house, and so it'll drive down the cost of the house. And I refer back to the developer for Bond Farm, who stood up here and gave his presentation on that, and he said he once built a development that had inadequate parking, and he said it was an unmitigated nightmare, and he would never do it again. He said it was his single, if I recall correctly, his biggest mistake he ever made in development. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. So I'm looking very carefully to see if they're Strider.
Strider, Benstone, 95117th. I appreciate the city really looking into this and their comments and the, from, gosh, 18 years ago, 19 years ago, when I first moved here, one of the first times I spoke was about setting up a grid system for buses so people know where you go, where you can transfer, get on a bus going in the other direction and getting back. And we still just have, like, two bus routes, and you have to do big-time memorizing or studying to know where they go. How do you go somewhere and get back? And I think there had been some discussion about many buses, M-I-N-I, and people being able to call and get special. I think, I mean, it's good that that happens, but I think it increases the cost rather than having a grid bus system that works. But, we got to look into all of these. I mean, concrete, not only does it create more pollution and more climate catastrophe by the building of the concrete and pouring it, but also the concrete itself increases global heating because you have more feedback to the atmosphere rather than more grass or trees or, you know, all of this is involved in the thing, and I appreciate you looking at it, and it's a big and complex and permanent problem that we really have to address as soon as possible because the climate catastrophe is happening whether we like it or not. Thank you much.
Thank you, Strider. Do you see anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing on 2024-39. Can I have a motion? It's been moved by Councilor Yarborough, seconded by Councilor Crist, to move 2024-39. Let's vote. And that carries unanimously with councilors McCoy and Martin absent. Do we need a bio break? All right, let's take five minutes. All right, let's take five minutes. And the next thing on the agenda are the items removed from the consent agenda. So I will turn it back to, over to Councilor Christ, who removed C, B, and C. Councilor Christ?
Yes, I'd like to start with B, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-one, a bill for an ordinance amending section fourteen point zero four point three three zero regarding temporary water permits for construct, construction water. Is there any staff available?
Any.
Thanks, Becky. I just noticed in the communication, it didn't say what the current deposit amount is.
Yes, Mayor Peck, Councilmember Chris. Currently, the deposit is around $600.
Okay, so this is a pretty substantial increase, then?
Yes.
And is that going to be feasible for people that need this, these units?
Yes, and the, the new deposit is more in line with the cost of the equipment because what has, what is happening is that currently that $600 deposit is, is not as much as the value of the equipment, and the equipment is not being returned at the end of the permit period.
And so the $2,000 is adequate?
Yes.
In other words, it would replace the equipment?
Yes.
Okay. That's the only question that I have.
Great, thank you.
Would you like me to go on to C? Or just go ahead?
No, let's move this one.
Okay. I move to, I move ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-one.
Second. It's been moved by Councilor Chris, seconded by Councilor Hidalgo Ferring, to move twenty twenty-four dash forty-one, which is B on our consent agenda. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, let's vote. And that carries unanimously with councilor, councilors Martin and McCoy absent. And Councilor Christ, you had item nine C as well.
Ah, yes. This is in regards to the development agreement between the city and the Longmont Climbing Collective. And what I noticed, now, the Climbing Collective is sponsoring the rock climbing, the national rock climbing event in our city, which sounds like that could be a big, big event for them. And so I just wondered, I couldn't find in the original agreement and in the amendment, if there's an option for them to pay ahead and accelerate the payments if they choose.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Josh Sherman, civil engineer with Public Works. I agree, as far as I know, I don't know that there's an option for them to pay ahead. Of course, if they want to meet their obligations sooner and complete their payments, that would be something that we could work with them on.
Okay. So they don't have to stick to 38 payments? They can tidy that up to 36 or 30?
They could, although based on the correspondence from them and the letter that was included in the packet, this seems like a, a cash flow issue for the business and with regard to other loans that are potentially due, so they're trying to balance all their payments each month.
Yeah, agreed. I just wanted them to have the option. Sometimes there's a penalty if you try to accelerate. Okay. All right. Those are the only questions I have. So I move Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty.
Second. It's been moved at Councilor Christ and seconded by Councilor Hidalgo Ferring to move twenty twenty-four dash thirty, item C on the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that carries unanimously with councilors McCoy and Martin absent. So now we're on general business. We have a twenty twenty-four water rate study. It looks like Brian McGill is going to present, or, or someone.
Good evening, Mayor Peck and members of the council. Chris Huffer, Assistant Director of Water and Waste Services. Sorry to change up the program on you just a little bit, but tonight, I, along with Lance Smith here, will be giving the presentation tonight for this informational item on how we do rate studies. It's come up again as time. It's been about five years since we've done our last rate study. And tonight, we just wanted to give you information on the process and procedures that we'll be looking at and going through before we bring you additional information. So with that, along with me, like I said, is Lance Smith. He's recently been appointed as Director of Business Enablement, part of our Strategic Integration Group, and he's come to us with a vast background of utilities as well as water, electric, and he's been involved with a lot of other things. We feel very fortunate to have him on staff now. And with that, I'll hand it over to Lance to start.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We are here tonight to talk about the twenty twenty-four rate study for the water utility. And we've got a brief presentation. We'll start with an agenda. So we'll talk briefly about the general uses of a race, rate study, and we'll talk specifically about our water utilities' rate pressures that we're seeing. I'll talk about the timeline for this. We're talking about work that's going to be done over the course of the summer, but we'll talk about the timeline. And then the last thing, we'll talk a little bit about, it says philosophy and goals, but really it's some common guiding principles around rate design. So with that, what is a rate study and why are we saying we need to do one in 2024? So rate studies do provide a way of checking to make sure that, that the revenues collected for a utility service, in this case, water service, are covering the, all of the cost of providing that service. One of those guiding principles is that you, you group customers into common usage rate classes, so common groups, and you want to make sure that each of those rate classes or customer groups is fully covering the cost of providing service to that group. So that will be part of the rate study. Now, a rate study is a fairly significant undertaking. It's going to start by looking at historical revenues and expenses, trying to forecast future revenues and expenses. We are talking about providing a vital service to the community, and we expect, as customers, we expect that the current level of service is maintained. That means we're going to have to make investments in existing assets as we try to refresh, renew, or replace them. So we'll also be looking at capital investment planning as part of this. And then we get into the cost of service portion of a rate study, and that cost of service portion is, again, allocating costs to specific rate classes and then looking at the rate classes to ensure they're covering their costs. Any imbalance that we might come up with, we can deal with as part of the recommendations from the rate design. So rate studies are really intended to, to address two major issues. So one, I've talked about having, making sure that there's no unintended cross-subsidy between rate classes. So one rate class is maybe paying more than it's required to provide service to them. And that typically will happen because over time, and we did a rate study five years ago, there will be, you know, certain costs will increase more than others, and so there can be an imbalance that's created there. The second reason that we want to do a rate study is that it is a vital tool in what is that it is a vital tool in long-term financial planning to ensure that the water utility remains resilient. Now, we are here to talk specifically about our water utility and some of the pressures it's faced. As Chris said, the last water rate study was done in 2019. That was five years ago. That was pre-COVID. That was pre-inflation that we're realizing today. And so a lot of things have changed in that five years. On the cost side, as I said, we're seeing significant inflationary pressures, both in operating costs and also in capital projects. And then on the revenue side, 2023 was the wettest year in Longmont in a century. And that was great for your lawn, not so great for water and utility revenues. Made it very challenging. And then the last part I wanted to talk about is the asset renewal. Like I said, in order to continue to provide the current level of service, we will need to make some investments in some asset renewal strategies, both at the plant and in the distribution system. So I've got two charts for you today. The first one here is kind of showing the near-term operating pressures we've been seeing. So, for example, the green bar represents the debt service. We did have a debt, a bond issuance in 2021 that increased our debt service costs significantly, starting in 2022. But we're seeing increases in costs across the board. The orange bar there is the water assessments. That's increased at a rate of about 15% a year. The blue bars represent personnel, operating and maintenance, materials and labor costs. And again, we are seeing inflationary pressures on those as well. And then the second chart here, and this is really the chart I wanted to speak to. So the chart, the graph, the line on the top, pardon me, the line on the top is, the green line represents all of the operating revenues that we've taken in. So that's from monthly utility bill charges. And then the red line underneath it represents our operating expenses. It does also include debt service. And the space between those two lines, the money that we've collected from monthly utility charges that are not being spent on operating expenses, that money is intended to fund those asset renewal strategies that I was talking about. And as you can see here, in 2023, that space really almost completely disappeared. Now, that was partly due to the fact that in 2023, it was very wet and revenues were about $2 million less than 2022. We do expect that to bounce back a little bit. But in general, we are seeing operating costs increasing faster than we had anticipated in the last rate study and faster than revenues are increasing. So I've talked a little bit about what a rate study is in general, and I've talked a little bit about why we need to do a rate study for the water utility this year. So now we get to the timeline here. Here we are in May, but we'll come back in July. Chris and folks will talk about the capital planning and what capital projects we're anticipating needing over the next five years. Then we'll come back in August. We'll talk about the cost of, the findings from the rate study itself. And while we haven't done the rate study, as I said, indications are that we will need to adjust rates as costs are increasing faster than revenues. If we need to do that, we would come back in the fourth quarter. And typically, rates are adjusted January 1st to line up with the city's fiscal year. So we would look at doing that in the fourth quarter. So then the last two slides are kind of this, it says philosophy here, but really they're guiding principles. I've listed a few guiding principles here. The first one, collecting sufficient revenue. The water utility is an enterprise fund. That means by definition that it needs to collect adequate revenues to cover all of its expenses. So we certainly need to achieve that. Second, achieve council and community goals. That's the beauty of us having a municipal utility. We can do what our community and you, City Council, direct us to do. Third, recover the cost of service from each rate class. I've talked about that a few times, but really the intent is to ensure that each rate class is paying for the costs of providing its service. Services are a good value for the community. We all want our utility bills to be as low as possible, but we also want to maintain the current levels of service, and so we have a balancing act to do there. Rates are easily understood. So we want our customers to understand our rates so that they can not just verify that their bill is calculated correctly, but also so that they can, we can empower them to manage their bill. The last two here, fund and encourage conservation and smooth increases over time. Those are not necessarily universal principles of rate design, but they are principles that we've used here in the past. And then lastly, I did want to say that affordability is always a consideration in any rate design. And certainly, we're taking that into consideration here. Fortunately, our customers, we do, the city of Longmont does have its city assistance and rebate systems, or CARES program, that can help customers who are struggling to pay their utility bills. It does provide, specifically, it does provide rebates for utility services. And while that's, this is, the CARES program is not a part of this rate study. The city is striving to figure out how to improve that program always, and we always want to take an opportunity to make citizens aware of it. So with that, we're done with the presentation. So I'll say thank you and try to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions from council? Counselor? Counselor Christ?
Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Smith. Can we go back to slide seven, please? It looks like in 2023 that we actually had an increase in revenue from, you know, 21 million to 24 million. And what's interesting in this to me is the yellow square, the water assessments also seem to increase in '23.
So there are no revenues on this chart. The black line is just the sum of all of the operating expenses. But yes, we have seen an increase in water assessments. As I said, they've increased at a rate of about 15% a year over the past few years.
Okay. And then the orange square, which is the transfers to general fund, it kind of stayed steady, but they increased in '21 and then also in '24. So there was actually, the 10% was bigger that you contributed to the city.
It's, so it certainly did increase early in the pandemic. It's actually decreased since 2021. Now, the 2024 number there is the budget. Everything prior to that is actuals. And so that 2024 number represents what we budget. We budget conservatively.
Well, we're kind of squinting at these little squares here, but like in 2020 and 2019, the contribution to the city was higher than, say, in '21 and '22.
Yes. Hi, Becky.
Hello. I've appeared from behind. Just to add a little flavor to that, transfers to general fund. So what that is, it's comprised of two costs. One is the franchise fee that we pay to the general fund. It's a percentage of the revenues that the water utility receives each year. And the other part is the administrative transfer fee, which is based on the actual services that we receive from the general fund. So that's the actual cost of HR and legal and accounting that the water utility incurs.
Okay. Okay, and then the debt payment seems to have stayed steady between '22 and '23. And I'm only checking my facts based on your... I have the question that when you come back with information, are you going to give us a better sense of what of this is actual operating and personnel versus the capital improvements? Because there was a bond issue for the capital improvements. So can you speak to that a bit?
So, yes. So first of all, I would like to, when we come back, we'll show you the costs really by the function. So we've got source of supply. We need to treat water, then we need to deliver water. So those personnel and operating and maintenance costs kind of span that whole spectrum. So I think it would be better to kind of look at it by, along the way. That's how you do a cost of service study, is allocating each of those costs separately. So we will have those costs, so we can speak to that.
Okay. All right, so if we go to slide eight, what I notice about the green line versus the red line is that as an enterprise, the water utility actually has some pretty good business habits in that the distance between the red and the green line stay pretty consistent. And so now we have this point where they touch over here in 2023, and we're saying that that's inflationary issues, correct?
So I attribute that to two things. First of all, 2023 was a very wet year. So there was a lot less irrigation happening than in a typical year. So revenues were actually $2 million less than they were in 2022. And then the other challenge there, I mean, if you were to draw a line through that green curve there, you would see it's increasing at a certain rate, but the red line is increasing at a faster rate. And so our operating expenses are closing that gap as well.
And that's inflationary? So capital improvement is not represented here?
No, no, except as the space between the two is where we would fund that.
Okay, well, debt service is included in operating expense, so that's part of the...
Yes.
Okay, so in the prior graph, what we noticed is that personnel and operating expenses have increased. Likely that, some of that has to do with inflation. So there's already been some adjustment for inflation. So if we go back and we ask for rate increases to adjust for inflation, that's sort of a second level of inflation that we're putting on the customer. See, when everybody does this, that's how inflation gets a little out of control because it starts building and doubling. And the problem with that is now you're chasing inflation. It's really hard to catch those numbers, just like with our bond issue. You know, it happened in 2020, and by the time, you know, we've gotten around to try to buy the equipment, now the multiplication effect has almost doubled the expense, even though the best planning was that, you know, 45 million was going to be enough to do the capital improvements. So I have concerns about trying to raise rates and that we will never quite create the gap that you need to do the maintenance that's also needed on that facility.
Well, that is a risk, but as you said at the beginning, the utility does have a history of some good financial planning and actually being able to support capital investments. And so I would expect that that would continue.
Although one of their best habits is to issue bonds, which is a great way to, you know, capital, create capital improvement and capitalize the improvements. So I guess the thing that I would be looking for when you come back, and this is not necessarily part of the rate study, but I think what would be useful for the council is to understand what equipment is needed for the improvements and also then what the construction, which I'm thinking people here, to do the improvements, and the timing of both of those. Because I think timing and money are going to be very important in making this happen. Is that something that you could bring back to us?
Well, I believe that is the intent of coming back in July. I'll let Chris speak to that.
Yes, Mayor Peck and Councilmember Chris, the next meeting that we'll have in July, we will be bringing our capital projects to you to show you the expansive, the things that we need to do in order to continue to provide the services that we have. So there'll be replacement of existing lines. There'll be some expansion of other facilities, as well as, we have tank projects underway. And we keep talking about the water plant, Nelson Flanders, and that expansion. And I believe it was the end of last year that we came to the council and talked about a plan to rearrange those projects themselves to give ourselves some redundancy and some resiliency in the existing plant so that we could push the ultimate construction of that plant out, which we're not seeing in these things here, but we'll definitely bring you more information on that.
Yeah, I'd like to know when things need to happen, for sure.
That's what our capital plan is for, yes.
Yeah, I have another concern. And this is, just as a city, and this is an enterprise of the city. When you raise utilities, and it was mentioned this evening that Longmont Powers raised rates, and then, you know, the water utility would be higher. And we've also had a property tax expense this year that was burdensome. What happens is that people have less disposable income. And I think what we're seeing from that is, you know, basic business is not investing in capital improvement. So our use taxes has taken a dive. And then if they aren't, you know, going out for entertainment or restaurants and what have you, then sales tax could go down. So what we would be doing is we would be funding the water utility, but we might be cannibalizing our own general fund to do that if people don't have the money to contribute to that fund. And the general funds funded by sales tax, use tax, and some property tax, you know?
I could let Lance talk about it more, but that's kind of the intent of strategic integration, coming together and looking at all the funds and all of our utilities as one to look at that impact on citizens individually, but holistically throughout those.
If I can jump into a couple of things. We haven't necessarily adjusted for inflation to date. So we had the rate increases projected over time. And so what you're seeing, that they're talking about in current, in 2023, you had two pressures, cost increases, sales going down. And then when you look to the future, that margin's narrowing for capital expenses. And so I wanted to adjust that piece. I think to the point of strategic integration and looking at all of these things, that's what we're trying to do. I've said this to other councils. I think the thing that we have to be incredibly careful with is, and being on the backside of one of these situations in a community that lost water to 75% of it. If you're not making those investments forward-looking in terms of what you need to replace, the actual cost of that investment, when you have to do it, is dramatically higher. And so what they're trying to do is they're looking at this is really slice this piece of where do we need to be? When do we need to be there in terms of things? Like Nelson Flanders is one piece. Waterline replacement is another piece. And part of that is also, as a community, we're entering into that replacement cycle in water lines that we haven't historically really been in because so much of the community is just now hitting that 50-year mark. So there are some things coming into play that we haven't necessarily had in terms of the same impact in terms of our replacement cycle. So those are all things that they're going to be bringing back to you. And then to the point of inflation, when we brought the options back on Nelson Flanders, that was one. Every project we had increased, and if you looked at the percentage increase... Every project we had increased, and if you looked at the percentage increase, it was pretty much the same, whether it was a street project or water, they were just, everything was moving ahead of us because of inflationary pressures. And as I think I stated to the council at that time, the inflationary increases on the goods that we're purchasing oftentimes are larger than the normal inflationary increases that we're seeing that we all face as individuals. And so, and we're still challenged with that in terms of even getting equipment in right now. We're still seeing the significant delays. And then when we talk about debt issuance, it's what really hurt us, or what really got us is when we projected Nelson Flanders, we projected in a point to go for a vote, and then you get the vote, and then you get it approved, and then inflation went out of control right after, you know, COVID. So we're having to look, you know, in some cases, three and four years out to pull this together. And when you get hit with just the odd inflationary cycle we've been in, that's a big part of the process in this. And then keeping the gap on capital replacement and balancing it between issuing debt, managing the rating, rate increases, and not incurring additional costs and interest with debt. So they're always trying, we're trying to thread all of these different pieces to really have the most financially beneficial approach, and we bring this to the residents, understanding that we also don't, when we talk about smoothing the rate increases, is you don't want those drastic rate increases that you see in some communities. And that's everything they're going to be bringing back.
I'm in favor of the work on Nelson Flanders. And I believe that bond issue is a great way to fund capital improvements. But it's a good example also of how timing is so important during a time of inflation because that should have been adequate, and it was not. So I think, here's my, my thought is, it would be nice to know all these details because acting quickly on unknown numbers will be very important. And also, the thing is, how do I want to say this? Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, I learn something every week. The thing is that I think a lot of taxpayers felt that by approving that bond issue, that they were avoiding an increase in rates. So I think we need to be sensitive to that and, and figure out what works best time-wise and money-wise so that we're sure of our numbers and we can get it done.
So I agree with a lot of what Councilor Chris has said. When, when you bring it back, it would be helpful to have what the projected cost was in 2020 and what the cost is now and in what areas has it, has it been inflated? The other thing that I found frustrating on these is like in 2023, because we had a lot of water and the residents' bills were not as high. And then when we go to the goals and philosophies of the city is that we're pushing conservation. It kind of flies in the face of each other because when we conserve, the rates go up. So it doesn't make, it's very difficult to sell. So we're going to have increases in the electric bills, and it would be really interesting to wait and see what the new, the new bill on our property taxes, what does that do for people? Because it's a lot to swallow. They under, the residents understand it, but can we afford it as we look at the price of everything else? We're trying to, we're trying to smooth out housing. We'll see how that works, too. So seeing no other questions in the queue, you don't need any direction from us other than what we have, we have said? Any concerns?
I don't think we do it this time, but thank you for your time, and we will be coming back in July to discuss capital planning to start with, and then we'll get to the, the rate study.
Thank you very much. These are hard, these are hard discussions. Thank you for what you put into it. Councilor Rodriguez.
Oh, I was just going to move that we recess as the Longmont City Council and convene as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One.
Second. Councilor Rodriguez made the motion to recess as the city council and convene as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, seconded by Councilor Yarborough. And I, as soon as I get my screen back, let's vote. That passes unanimously with Councilors McCoy and Martin absent. What we have on this is a resolution, R-LGID-2024-02. It's a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One enacting a supplemental budget and making an additional appropriation for the expenses and liabilities of the district for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, may I please have a motion to pass 2024-02?
I'll move resolution LGID-2024-02.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Hidalgo Ferring, seconded by Councilor Chris. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. That carries unanimously with Councilors McCoy and Martin absent. We've had three hats this meeting. I move that we adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
Second.
That was seconded by Councilor Hidalgo Ferring. Let's vote. That passes unanimously with directors McCoy and Martin absent. We are now at final call, public invited to be heard. Oh, dear. We scared them. Seeing no one in the chamber, I'm going to close. Final call, public invited to be heard. Do we have any mayor and councilor comments? Councilor Hidalgo Ferring.
You know, I had failed to mention this during our council updates. I wanted to comment around the early childhood education march that occurred, what was it, the 18th, two weekends ago? And it was, it was very enlightening to hear that our issue is not just a Longmont issue, but it's, you know, I think we all kind of, you know, see that it's a nationwide issue. And looking at all the partners that are coming together and other congresspeople and state legislators who understand the need, and knowing that there is, that there are dollars out there going to, and I want to delve a little deeper into this, that are going to the county and just making sure that Longmont, where we have a high number of working-class individuals, people with young families, we are now the largest city in Boulder County to ensure that we do get a fair share of what that money, because that would make a huge impact on our working-class folks who are in need of childcare. So wanted to throw that out there for public and for the rest of council.
And on that subject, we're meeting every Friday morning by Zoom, the same group that put together the march. And our last meeting was that we are going to have our own little committee with Boulder County, with Hispanic Latino, with Napa-lease. About five or six of us are going to come up with ideas on just focusing locally and how can this group get dollars that the governor has already put out that are available? So we're going to come up with a plan and hopefully bring it to council, see if there's any, any way we can make things work. So seeing no one else in the queue, I would like to see if our city manager has any comments.
No comments, mayor, council.
City attorney?
No comments, mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, don't say aye. We are adjourned.